Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It's been here for the continuation of our candidate forums. The following will be a candidate forum for the parents of USD School District 453. As you can see, we have a heavy cast of candidates. I was asked during the break how many seats were open on the City Commission. That's three, three open seats and three votes for City Commission, Level Worth, and three votes for City Department. And I believe it's four for the school. So, four of these people should have heard your votes this evening. The time we've given each candidate has been four. Two minutes for their introduction, one minute for answering questions, and one minute for closing statements because we have so many people. We have two people who are not here, so let me read their statements. Karen Overby writes, "Thank you for hosting this candidate forum for the Level Worth School Board. My name is Karen Overby. I have lived in Level Worth with my family since 2005 and am a Army member and I graduated from the University of Kansas. But I have most pride in being a wife to my husband Jerry and a mom to our five children, four of whom have graduated from Level Worth Public Schools. I have been involved in the Level Worth community in many different ways over the years and volunteered through my children's activities, Level Worth County Social Records, Shelter of Hope, and the Magdala Conception Church. I am running for a seat on the Level Worth School Board because I care deeply about this district and the students who are the future of our community and our nation and want our students to have the best education possible and provide the foundation for future success." There are very many things happening in Level Worth Public Schools, but I believe there are room for improvement in four key areas. Number one, academic achievement, where the half of the students in USD 453 are not doing enough at grade level, they're almost half or not in Language Arts and Sciences. Secondly, fostering responsible citizenships. Our students are the future stewards of the nation. We hear a bunch about kindness, empathy, inclusivity, and the rights of self-expression. These are obviously not bad things, but they are about gratitude, sacrifice for the future, personal agency, accountability, hard work, competition, and merit. Thirdly, transparency. Just for responsibility and transparency are extremely important. We've always heard that schools are underfunded, that Kansas spending per student is higher than that of other states who deliver better results. Fourthly, parents' rights. Parents have the ultimate authority over their children. We have seen in our public schools an increased blurring of boundaries between adults and children and schools and families in terms of what's appropriate to expose and to discuss with other people's children. That is for Karen Overby. The other candidate who couldn't be here this evening and gave us a statement is Jason Clare. Jason writes, "Good evening, members of the audience and fellow candidates. My name is Jason Clare. I'm running to serve you as a member of the Level Worth School Board. I apologize for not being able to attend this evening. I will participate in the next forum scheduled for October 16th at the Level Worth Public Library. My wife Julie and I moved to Level Worth from Arizona in 2001. We have two children. Our son is a graduate of Level Worth High School and is currently attending college under the Army R OTC Scholarship, earning from the Level Worth three-year R OTC. Our daughter is currently a sophomore enrolled in JRL OTC program and excels academically. I am a alum of Arizona State University with a degree in History and American Studies. Work history includes experience in praising and writing for publications with an international auction company, nearly a decade's worth of civil service experience, as a certified arborist, and supervisor in the City of Level Worth Parks and Recreation Department, and a code officer for the Level Worth Community Development. For the past 15 years, Julie and I have owned and operated overlooked antiques and military surplus. Our family business located in downtown Level. Through our store, we own and promote the annual overlooked military collector show on the downtown level. Since 2014, the venue has attracted thousands of shoppers and tourists to our community during the third weekend of November. For more than a decade, Julie and I have through the time and resources of Level Worth JRL OTC, we have enjoyed watching many of our kids, your kids and ours, grow up and forge productive lives, thanks in part to Level Worth JRL OTC program, which is one of the finest in America. In addition, our involvement in the Level Worth JRL OTC program, and I am an appointed member of the Kansas State Board of Education Commissioners, parent advisory council. I served as a board member for the Level Worth County Superior Society and fundraiser, contributed to completion of the Abraham Lincoln statue located in the City Hall South Lawn. That is Jonathan Clare. With that, ladies and gentlemen, I'm giving each two minutes to make your introduction and do your service.
So this is why no one wants to sit here, right? Seriously. It's the odd thing. Oh, mic, mic, mic. There we go. Can you hear me? All right. Good evening, everybody. My name is George Johnson. So glad to see so many faces out here that I don't know. Those of you that do know me, you know me as Coach George Johnson. I've been in our community well, close to 20 years now. I am a graduate of St. Mary's College. I grew up in southeastern Kansas. I am married to my high school sweetheart of 24 years. We have three children, two of which have graduated from Level Worth High School, and the third is a junior, who's our phenomenal child. We call him our golden child.
Don't tell the others, too.
No, we tell them all the time. We keep things real in our house. The thing about me, I'm 100% about the kids. Everything I do is about the kids. I jumped into education a long time ago. I taught at the primary level, taught at the secondary level. Really, after 9/11, I took over a gentleman's classroom that was called a ward. The kids were invisible. I knew I could make a difference, and that's when I decided, you know what, this is the route that I wanted to go. I am taught here at Level Worth High School. I've also been a substitute teacher at Lansing. I've also taught school in the beginnings, but our kids are more challenged. So, educationally, I've almost done it all. My current work space, I work as a contractor for the government. Yes, so I manage projects, manage money, allocate money, choose people to work on our government contracts for the veteran and the veteran. I love this community. I'm running because I want to support our students and our staff that are already great. So, I would love to have your vote on November 7th, George Johnson for BOE.
Well, good evening, everyone. First, thank you to the chamber for coordinating this opportunity to speak to everyone, and I thank those who are attending or watching online, and I appreciate your efforts to be involved and involved. I'm Judy Price, and Level Worth is my adopted hometown. I believe in strong schools and strong communities because both are needed for a strong, strong society and thrive. As a retired Army engineer, I bring experience in planning, facilities, budgets, and providing oversight and leadership to large organizations. And while I still work, I make time to be involved in the district and the community. My son began his pioneer journey at Lawson Elementary, and as he progressed through the years, I've been involved in each of his buildings through their PTA or Pi programs and their site councils. He's now a senior at Level Worth High, enjoying autotech and band, and it's because he's a drummer. I was involved as a community member in the discovery panel in subsequent efforts that led to the successful bond initiative in 2018, and I thank the Level Worth community for supporting and passing the bond, making the new intermediate center in the Lawson Early Childhood Education Center possible. For my community involvement, I support CASA, Unity in the Community, and scouting with my time and treasure, along with being an active member of the Level Worth Alliance Club. I serve on the Level Worth Education Foundation because I believe in its mission of supporting and expanding educational efforts in Level Worth Schools and getting community involved. I advocate for opportunities for all of our children and not just my own. Our children need to know they have options. As an engineer, I'd love to see our Pioneer Career Center packed with students looking for the future in healthcare or the trades such as electricians, plumbers, and mechanics because the shortages are out there now and the demands are growing. Great things happen in our Level Worth Schools, and who wouldn't be excited about the national recognition for our theater, JRL OTC, DECA, TSA programs, or the wide array of scholarships and academic recognitions. Our students provide raw talent, but it's our dedicated teachers who shape the future of these young folks and make these opportunities possible. I deeply appreciate what they do in our classrooms every day for our pioneers. Again, I thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight, and I ask you to continue supporting our schools and community. And then in November, I ask for your vote, and please vote for the candidates who care.
Hello, I'm Doug Darling. I'm a carpetbagger in Level Worth. I've only been here 40 years. I don't have four sets of grandparents in Muncie Cemetery. Came involved in education in Level Worth in 1987 when I got back from reforge. Was mildly interested in that because I had a kid in the school district, having had a grandmother that was a teacher, a mother that was a teacher, a wife that was a teacher, and a sister that was a teacher. Bond issue in 87 went down. I was on reforge while the information on that was being held out. Came back, voted against because I really didn't understand it. And I said, "Doug, you're pretty stupid for doing that." So I started attending school board meetings, and I got elected for the first time in 95 and was on the board during that bond issue in 97. I got involved this time because I had no intention after the last election of coming back, but when I saw people trying to strangle the school district on funding, it upset me. And if nothing else from here tonight, I hope you vote for the people who will support funding our great staff and help our great kids achieve success in every classroom every day. Thank you.
I'm Jessica Wilson, and I have been in the community for 21 years. I came as a sixth grader, graduated from Level Worth High School in 2016. I have currently raised my children here in this district. We have four currently in the school district still, USD 453, and one who graduated from Level Worth High. I am the wife of Jermaine Wilson. We also started Unity in the Community, and we do a lot in the community. We've been active in the community for a little over eight years, and we've just been doing what we can where we can and helping those who live here. So on November the 7th, I'm asking for your vote and your support to help make it better.
Good evening, guys. My name is Danielle Wells, and I'm here to earn your vote for reelection for the USD 453 School Board. I'd like to thank everyone for being here tonight. This crowd is much more than I anticipated. It's amazing to see you all. Thank you for being involved and getting interested, and if you want to talk more when we're done, please let's talk.
I'm a proud parent to four Level Worth pioneers. We have, I have had a student, at least one student, in our schools for the last 21 years consecutively, down to one. Three have graduated. I've got a junior. My junior is amazing as well. George is good. I have served in our schools with all of these people with the exception of Mr. Grossman. We have all done great things for schools. So, volunteerism is in all of our wheelhouses. If you see my card, it's got everything on there. I'm not going to bore you with the details. Every decision that the school board makes needs to be student-focused. I believe every child deserves the opportunity to excel and thrive in our school systems. Parents are the most important driver in a child's education. I believe it's the partnership between the schools and parents that produce successful students and ultimately capable adults. How we accomplish this looks different for each student depending on their own personal and family needs, and not every student comes to school ready to learn every day, yet it's our responsibility to teach them. I believe we need to ensure their basic needs are met to enable them to learn, the information being provided, and our community is diverse. Each student comes to school with their own set of unique qualities and challenges. Together as a board, we need to come together and welcome all students and their families into our educational environment where they are and help them excel and pursue the future that they're capable of. I ask that you please vote for me, Danielle Wells, on November 7th, or October 18th, the courthouse early, or any day there in between. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Deborah Brown, and I'm running for Level Worth School Board. I want to thank the chamber for inviting me out this evening, and it is nice to see all your lovely faces. I want to emphasize, I'm running for the school board because education is very important to me. My husband and I have four children. We're a Christian family, and we just want to see how we can better improve. By coming into the school board and just from my volunteerism with the school, I was the PTA president for two years at Level Worth High School. I ran the concession stand, and the funds from the concession stand ran our projects for senior project graduation, the, forgive me, the-
You got it.
-sophomore programs that we had, and then also for our freshmen in tailgate in our junior programs. All the funds that we raised, so it was a significant amount of money that we put together, that was very important to me. And also, when I was at Warren Middle School, I was a parent engagement coordinator and was responsible for, as a parent volunteer, getting other parents involved, getting them to come to the school, see what we could do, just beyond parent-teacher practices, but really interested in being engaged in the school. I'm definitely for our teachers. I support our teachers and staff. I support our special education department, and it just, I want to emphasize on my card that, you can see it, working together for success. And I took that from Romans 8:28, where it says, "God works all things together for the good of those who love Him and work together toward His purpose." That's very important to me, and that's what I end up, what I emphasize this evening. As I'm on the school board, I ask for your vote. I will not be lazy with your vote, and I'm looking forward to working with the board going forward. Thank you.
My name's Mark Grossman. I'm not going to bore you with my visa. It's on my card if you want to read it. I have two master's degrees, one in education, one in administration. I have superintendent experience, and my purpose, my sole purpose in running for election this time is not to get you to vote for me, but to get you to throw out the socialist trash that we cover and have on our school board. Our kids are being dis-served, and our system is being destroyed one school board at a time. We have a school board that refuses to comply with SCOTUS order parental rights. You have no rights at all according to the school system. Your kids will decide what they want to do, no matter how old they are. There is truancy out the you-know-what at the middle schools, the highest truancy rate in all of Kansas, not just here, but all of Kansas, and there are three to five pice every single week down there, and their answer is to get you to go out there and escort kids in and out. What happens when the first parent that does that gets punched in the face and we end up with a lawsuit? Why aren't the superintendent out there? Why aren't the school principals out there? Why aren't the board members out there doing their damn jobs? I intend, I haven't heard anybody say exactly what they're going to do. I intend to do away with the driver's education program. I find it unconscionable that the highest-paid teacher in all of Level Worth is a driver's ed instructor. I intend to put cameras in the schools, and I intend even to consider decertifying the school system's teacher union. I think they're serving a disservice to all of us. But if nothing else, I mean, you need to decide why we have these people in place, and you can't blame the superintendent for anything. I mean, he's just following the marching orders of a socialist board who makes a gang out of kids. So, whether you vote for me or not, it's fine. Get rid of the trash. Bring the storm.
A lot of talk is that, a lot of talk nationally and locally about the formal Parents' Bill of Rights, whether it's a bill of rights or something else. Is it prudent, should Level Worth have some sort of formal way of articulating and documenting clear expectations for the parents, for the teachers, and for the schools?
I am all for a Parents' Bill of Rights, but first and foremost, we need to get the school board to comply with the rule of law. We need to get them to give the parental rights that the Supreme Court has ordered them to give and that they refuse to do. So, I think we need parental rights, but I also think we need to hold our school board accountable. How did they get away with violating the court order? You and I would be in jail if we did that.
Again, I'm Deborah Brown, and yes, I am for a Parents' Bill of Rights. I've looked into it a little bit, what they've done in Lansing and what they're doing nationally, and I would like to bring that to Level Worth to support our parents, to give clarity to the schools, and just burn together to, again, bring clarity on the Parents' Bill of Rights, and I am for that.
I am Danielle Wells. I am definitely against the Parents' Bill of Rights. The parents that have students in our schools have rights. We determine what our kids can and can't do. If there's something that's presented from the district or from a teacher that is offered to us, we have the right to say, "No, thank you. I would like something alternate." All the Parents' Bill of Rights does is makes our teachers not want to teach. They are leaving the educational field because they are being restricted from being able to have relationships with students. There is no teacher that is indoctrinating our kids. If they would, they would have more deodorant, come to school on time, be prepared. That is what they would indoctrinate if they had the opportunity. So, no, I'm against Parents' Bill of Rights.
I'm Jessica Wilson, and I am also against it. I've worked inside of two of our district schools, and we've had no problem going to our schools with our kids, and I just think that it doesn't take that for us to be involved. What it takes is for us to get up and go be involved.
Right.
As a life member of the NRA, I regard Parents' Bill of Rights as just another gun law on top of the 20,000 exists across the country. It's not going to change a dag gum thing. The current USD 453 policies on IF, instructional materials, JR, student records, and IKDA, religious objection to activities, accomplish everything that the four points that Senate Bill 58 already does, and they've been in existence in Level Worth Schools for many, many years.
One of the drawbacks about being a leader person is that everybody else has already kind of covered your ideas. So, the Bill of Rights, as it's written, show me what we don't have in policy already. Parents do have rights. We have the policies there, but you just need to be aware of what the policies are. Once again, show me what we don't have, and then we can address the policy that we do have.
You know, I'm trying to take a deep breath because when someone attacks my middle school, where I coach that, the kids I love, I take personally. We have great students. We have great teachers. There's three flights a day. I have no idea where you're getting that number from, sir. Parents' Bill of Rights, unfortunately, our parents sometimes don't know what their rights are already. I'm not for this Parents' Bill of Rights. What I am for is for any of us that you have the free time, give back to your schools. Give back your time. You won't be assaulted. I was at Warren Middle School two weeks ago. Kids are high-fiving what I've never seen before.
What are your feelings of state testing? Should it be a priority, and what is a better direction if so? State testing. What is your feeling about state testing? Should it be a priority, and what's a better direction about that?
You know, it's interesting that a lot of colleges are known away with some of the testing that students do already. It doesn't matter which college they go to. As a former school teacher, state testing, I'm not going to lie to you, would get in the way sometimes. It would get in the way. What I've noticed is it gave us an opportunity to find measurable numbers of where we can improve as educators. Any opportunity we have to improve upon what we do, it makes it better for the school, makes it better for our district. My personal students, my kids, would score high on state tests, and it would make them feel good about that. And the areas they were deficient, it gave us the opportunity to work on that. When my son scored perfect on his science test, I couldn't pull him off the walls, couldn't pull him off the ceiling. So, yes, state testing, in my opinion, needs to stay in place because it's immeasurable for us teachers. As well, I'm a former teacher. I'm sorry.
I agree that state testing has a place. It is a metric. It helps us figure out where our students stand against the established requirements, but they don't need to be the focus of our education because our students are actually expected to have a lot of other skills. They're known as the ROSE capacities that were placed in the law under Brown Back, and it really talks about your ability, the soft skills, the ability to be a leader, the ability to be work on time, to deal with people, all of those things that we need to be good citizens and such. So, testing has a place. It figures out where our students are, but it shouldn't be the focus of an education.
Just ditto what you said. I'm probably the only person in here that actually took those tests. When on a previous time on the board, I sat down there at the high school, took the sophomore and junior tests because they're not given to seniors. It was amazing how much math I had forgotten from 40 years before, but they're fairly comprehensive tests, and they do do a good job of going through, be it math, be it social studies, be it English language. So, keeping them as part of our assessment is an important thing.
Again, I'm Jessica Wilson, and I believe that they do serve us a purpose, and we should have them, but also we need to work on building relationships with these students.
I haven't stood up yet, so let's do that. State testing is a metric. It is something that we should look at. It should not be what we strive to teach to the test. That is not where we need. We need to make valuable citizens. What we're seeing is that employability is not done on tests. Employability, what the employers are looking for, they're looking for teamwork, communication, time management, problem-solving, creativity, leadership, organization, emotional intelligence, decision-making, and stress management, not what you can do if you can remember specific dates and times and ratios, and math is terrible.
I am definitely for state testing, and we do need that as a standard. More importantly, I think it's important to prepare our students to take tests that starts at home with our teachers and in the classroom, maybe after-school activities, tutoring, but making sure our students are capable of completing the test, understanding what is being asked in each question. That's more important at this point, and especially for our kids in Level Worth. If you have a test in front of you, do you know what the question is asking and how to address it appropriately? In addition, again, state testing, that's very important, and I do agree with state testing.
I think state testing is absolutely essential to determining whether or not our schools are performing their function, and that's in educating our kids. I also believe that we ought to make mandatory ASVAB testing so that we know exactly what our kids can do, whether they're employable, you know, what job skills they have, and this doesn't mean I want to recruit everybody into the military. It means I want our kids to have all the options available, and you can only do that if you get ASVAB testing, which is the military's form of testing, along with the state test. We need to have a gauge for whether our school teachers or the underpaid unsung heroes, what's going on here. They're the ones that deserve raises, and we're just not treating our teachers the right way. I think the unions are part of that problem. So I am 100% for state testing and for ASVAB testing without, you know, meaning that they're going into the military.
Okay, this next question has four points to it. The next question is a test.
It's a test.
It is a test. It is a test. What are your highest expectations for, number one, school administrators? Or two, coaches and teachers? Number three, students? And number four, parents? What are your highest expectations of children? What are your highest expectations of the school administrators? Teachers and coaches? Students? Since it's got four parts, sir, let's give them two minutes.
Thank you. I don't know if I'll need that much. School administrators is an easy thing. We can't blame the onus on our school superintendent when he is at the purview of the school board that doesn't allow him to do his job. So I have nothing but respect for our current school superintendent, even though it really concerns me that three African-Americans were referred for that position by the Kansas State Board, and not a single one, not a single one or a single woman was even considered by this racist school board. You need to ask them why. Coaches and teachers, they need to live up to a higher standard, too. I think coaches are the pals, the buddies, the ones that form the closest alliances with our kids. So I think coaches need to be of the highest moral position that they can be and need to set a firm example for what our kids need to do. Same thing with teachers. I don't believe the union is allowing teachers to do that. Students, I think students need to be held accountable. I don't think parents are doing that. If students break the rules, I think they need to be sent home at home schools where none of the other kids are affected by disruptive behavior. And I think parents need to be held accountable. I mean, we are in a position where we're asking parents to please come out to the middle school to escort kids in and out of the school because of the number of fights. I'm getting those numbers from parents, from teachers, and the school principals. There are three to five fights a week there, whether you want to admit to it or not. So I'm holding everybody to the highest of standards, and, you know, the state testing and the ASVAB will show us whether or not the administrators and the coaches are doing their job.
Thank you for this question. This is actually a passion of mine. I have been, gosh, for the last six, seven years, working with our PTA team, our site council, to get parents involved, to work differently with the teachers, finding out what they need from the parents. And not just one-sided. We cannot put all this pressure on teachers without supporting them. And they're being asked year after year to provide more learning, more training for our students without some things backing it up. So what we need to do, and I do take it personally accountability to do this, is get our parents involved. With PTA, I invited out some friends to help with the meetings, and some of the ladies are here tonight, and they invited friends, and that got more people involved, more ears and eyes open to what's going on in our schools. Site council is very important for parents to be involved with. And also, with our administrative staff, I've worked closely with them for a number of years, and they are fantastic, phenomenal people that work very hard for our school district and work very closely with our teachers. One thing I would say is if you have students in school, if you're a teacher, if you are, I'm sorry, if you're a parent and you have students in school, a neighbor, be encouraging. Encourage the teachers. Send a note. Send a thank you card. That's what I've been doing. I do it a couple of times a year, just thanking our teachers. I have my students thanking their teachers. That goes a long way. As far as our coaches, our coaches do a great job. They work very hard, and we have a great coaching staff across the board. I personally coached here in Lovrenburg for the Lovrenburg Parks Recreation right here, a basketball team with my husband, and that's hard work as a volunteer. I did that. And we did it for a number of years, and the kids today, as Coach George mentioned, you get high fives from them. And it's important. If you can encourage us to the teacher, teachers, encourage the students, parents, encourage everyone, that'll be the working together that I'm looking for in Lovrenburg.
So I think this is super, super simple. If everybody, the administrators, the coaches, the teachers, the students, and the parents, all keep in mind that the number one focus is the student's success, there is no failure. We all need to work together for that. We all need to work together for that community. You can volunteer at our schools at any time. We all need to be here. The students are our future, seriously. Everybody has a hand in it. Everybody in this room, everybody in our community, everybody in our buildings, no matter what, you are responsible to make sure that our students are successful.
I'm Jessica Wilson again, and I say the same thing they did. It's about working together to make this community better. Thank you.
A little bit different take, although I agree with what Danielle has said previously. For school administrators, it's enforce district policy and laws as they apply. It is to support their teachers and staff and inform the BOE of what needs to change in policy if such a change is needed. For coaches and teachers, communicate with parents, meet the kids where they're at, not where you want them to be, but where they're at because they've got a lot of other things going on in their lives. Students, come prepared for class. Do your homework. Maintain manners in class. If your parents communicate with their teachers, volunteer in the school as possible, and enforce rules and standards at home. Teachers only have them for six hours a day. You've got them for the other 18.
For me, the administrators, teachers, coaches, it's really about relationships and keeping a kid's first attitude because that's what makes our kids successful, to keep that in mind. For parents, it's being involved. When you have an involved parent, your kids do better. They're there. They want to be at school. But we have to get parents involved. Our issue right now is that we have a lot of parents, well, I'm reminded, so let me share. It's a cartoon I saw. It's a meme that, say, 15, 20 years ago, a kid came home with an F on the paper. Mom and dad are hustling the kid, going, "Why did you fail?" Unfortunately, today, today's era, our teachers get the call going, "Why did you fail on that kid?" It's not the right dichotomy there. It's really on the parents. We need to encourage their children to do their best, but we need to encourage all of our parents to be involved in our school, and it takes our community. So, kids and relationships.
I seriously got nothing. I took all the good stuff. I will say this. I have never met an administrator whose door is not open and willing to talk to you if you come in with the right attitude, not once, since I've been here. Now, I'm gonna lump these three together. My teachers, my parents, my coaches. These have to be like these two gentlemen over here, Mr. Chris Bergman and Mr. Patrick Tully. The coach Tully's at Lovrenburg High School. He asks for help. "How can you help me?" He met the kids at their level. He did everything he could outside the gym to let them know he cared about them. Mr. Chris Bergman up over there. If we do too much to handcuff him, he can't be himself. If you've never been in that auto shop classroom, you don't know what you're missing out on. They do so much for those kids. We need to support people like that and recruit those people in and keep them here because we need more Patrick Tully's. Chris Bergman, how it is.
So while you brought up the question of recruiting, what can we do to recruit more talented teachers in the district?
We want that to happen.
Yes, what we need.
You know, it's interesting that I was having this conversation about everyone thinks it's always about the money. When I went to education, the last thing I thought about was the money. You think about the lives you can change, and the longer you do it, the harder it makes for you to leave. So you ask, "How can we recruit them?" Well, we gotta identify those teachers who are gonna fit well in our community. That's what's gonna keep them staying here. It's not about the money. Trust me. If you go into education to get paid, you picked the wrong field. Absolutely. Our community has a lot of things to sell, and the things that we can sell is ourselves. We are a great community. That's why so many military families move here and stay here.
There's a shortage of teachers. Everyone's having problems with that. But the recruitment part for us goes back to my whole thing about parents' involvement, community involvement. Support our teachers. Instead of being that parent that goes and hollers at the teacher, "Why did my child fail?", go ahead and build that relationship with the teachers. And I think teachers will stay when they realize that they've got a supportive community, that people will reach out and be there for them when they need your help. So I encourage you, if you've got extra time, volunteer at our schools, even if you don't have a kid in school, because to be honest, that investment of your time is an investment in our community and an investment in our future. So what you really need to be doing is encouraging those other parents, those other adults, to be a part of the community that keeps our teachers here. We want them to be part of their community. So build the relationships and keep them here.
Relationships are important. The attitude of people in the community are important. I volunteer weekly, or I should say mostly weekly, most weeks, in first and fifth grade classrooms. So I met David Brewer on Mondays and Richard Warren intermediate on Fridays. First grade teacher that I worked with last year, and two of the four other of the four first grade teachers that David Brewer left the district because of the attitude expressed by some board members and some political figures within this community. And that's one, you're not gonna get teachers sticking around if you constantly get vitigated by people in the community that you know better.
I'm gonna go back to what George was saying. It's all about the support. We gotta support them and make them want to stay here. They come because they want to be a difference. So we need to do the difference and be there for them, help them, support them, show up for them, and appreciate our people.
I think Doug made a really important point, that we need to sing the praises of our district in order to bring the best and the brightest here. There are some things that aren't great. Those are not the things we need to sing about and go and do what we've done. We need to be better than that. We need to rise above and bring everybody together. And our teachers are great, and our teachers are our greatest retainers. They can bring in and attract new ones by sharing their experiences. I think that's what they've done when they've left us. We don't need more to leave. We need them to stay. Our teachers are phenomenal.
One thing I want to mention is I am a graduate of Lovrenburg High School. I grew up here in Lovrenburg, and I have phenomenal teachers. And they are, some of them are still here, and some of them are retired. But the support that we can put behind the teachers is very important. But the question is recruiting. How do we recruit good teachers? We should, I feel, hire from within, recruit from within, people that are already working in the school district, in the community, maybe they're at daycare centers. Let's go to those folks and see if they're interested. What can we do to support them? I know the board has approved continuing education and supporting that. That's very important for our teachers, as well as, you know, going out to other communities. Are there teachers interested in moving to Lovrenburg? Lovrenburg is a great community, and I'm proud to be part of it.
I've had an opportunity to talk to a half a dozen substitute teachers, none of whom want to come to our school systems because of the abuse they face by the kids and the refusal, not the failure, but the refusal of the principals and the schools to hold those kids accountable. They're put in detention one day and then brought back, which brings me to the main subject. We need to protect our teachers from physical and financial abuse. We need to make sure that our teachers do not have to go in pocket in order to buy school supplies. We're not doing that while we have some of the highest-paid, you know, administrators anywhere in the state. And we need to lower the student-teacher ratios. There is nothing wrong with going out there and bringing in student interns from the colleges and assigning our certified teachers as supervisors so that they can have smaller classroom sizes. But we need to lower those student-teacher ratios, and we need to get parents involved. But we need to protect our students, and I intend to do that by try my best to fight the union and put cameras in the classroom.
Final question, and this one's gonna be a little bit different from what we've talked about. So hopefully it'll give us a little insight into your personality and who would actually fit itself. Question, what is your favorite book, and why would you recommend it? What is your favorite book, and why would you recommend it?
My favorite book is by a gentleman, by the name of Jonathan Swetkin, spoken by his proposal. I really believe that that is the way society is looked at. I believe it gives us students outlooks. So actually, that's my second favorite book. My favorite book, no matter what you believe in, is the Bible. So I would rather, you know, that be approached from the parenting point of view, but I would do my best to make sure kids got involved with both of those.
My favorite book is awesome, but also, Nardia would be my favorite book. Thank you.
So my favorite book, Clyde Barker is my number one favorite author, and I would not recommend our students read that. That is not appropriate. It does not need to be banned. It just not necessarily need to be available. So what I would recommend to our students read, the very first sci-fi fantasy book that I read was Madeline, The Wrinkle in Time. Give them that. If they don't like what they're reading, give them a different genre. Get them in love with reading. Reading is amazing. Books are amazing. Thank you.
My favorite book also is the Bible, and it can be a little hard to understand when you're young. But I think that we live it, and that's how we show it.
Well, I do like the Bible. It is hard to read, but I would go with the Federalist Papers.
My favorite is Bull Prince, and I've never been able to pronounce the author's name right, but it's St. Espiri. Anyway, I love the Bull Prince because it instills a sense of curiosity, adventure, imagination in anyone who reads it. So, the Bull Prince. Go check it out.
I think we all have something we agree upon here. My favorite book's the Bible. But a book that I love, I want kids to read, that was part of your question, was The Little Engine That Cooked. First Sergeant and I have been joking for years when I was teaching in the high school. And I would say, "First Sergeant, what are you doing with these kids? You can't achieve in Lovrenburg students." And he would like, "But I'm gonna keep trying, sir." I'd say, "First Sergeant, you're crazy. You are crazy." Here we are, three national championships later, and the little engine that cooked.
All right, candidates, you have one minute to speak, or you can say anything.
I'm gonna keep mine short. Once again, thank you guys for inviting us out here. George Johnson, 100% about the kids. I got that slogan from the students and teachers that I spoke with when I said I was gonna run, and so many of them said, "Thank you for running." I put my name in the hat because I want to do what I can. We always say what people should do, but we sometimes don't want to take action. I want to be a part of a board that takes action. I want to be a part of a board that supports our new superintendent, and I'm definitely gonna support our kids, students, and staff. Once again, George Johnson.
So I'm Judy Price. I'm kids-first. I advocate for all of our kids. As I went out the last few years to different conferences across the state, people ask me, "How many kids do I have?" Well, I have five kids, nine others. But what I really like to tell them is that, "No, I've got about 3,600 because all of the kids are my kids." And I really care about what they can do and where I think they should be going. And so I ask that when you go out to vote, whether you do it on 18th October or on 7th November, please vote for candidates who care, and if nothing else, please remember, Price is Right for USD 453.
I would have to go back to a motto that Ted, Judy, and I know quite well. Ted and I graduated in the same class many, many years ago. But duty to our kids is most important, and I want you to vote for four people who will be good for the kids and important and I want you to vote for people who will be good for the kids and keep them up front. That includes funding the things that need to be funded for them to be successful in every classroom and every day.
I am Jessica Wilson and I also ask that you vote for the kids and the staff and just to come out, and if you do it on November 7th, just make a choice that helps us grow. Vote Jess for, yes for Jess and vote you have a great day.
I think it's important that we shift our mindset of education from restoring the way that it was and to look forward to growing into the way that it will be. Brian Stevens quote. Our world looks much different now than when our parents went to school and we need to prepare our students for the world of tomorrow. I ask that you please give me another shot. I'm not done yet. Another four years is all I'm asking. We need to have me on the board. I think I provide a difference, opportunity, and experience than other people and it's good to have diversity. And I appreciate your time and I ask for your vote. Thank you.
And I'm Deb Brown. And I would appreciate your vote on the 7th. Early voting starts October 18th. I just wanna emphasize again, I work together with folks. Someone mentioned that I volunteer with most of the people here and several people in this room. I know how to work with people and to get things accomplished. That's the next most important thing. I'm not against anyone. I'm for the kids and again, I will not be lazy with your vote and it's important that I know the teachers already, I know what they're looking for, I know what the kids are looking for. They've expressed it and when I volunteer with them, what they're looking for from us as leaders in their community. And I am that person. Deb Brown, thank you.
I think the whole just comes down to parentalize. When a school board is allowed to spit in the face of the Supreme Court and say, "Those people's gonna find me, some people's wrong, somebody needs to be crossed." I also take offense with the fact that our college school board allowed and escorted a state representative onto high school property for the sole purpose of videotaping, taking pictures of a student's artwork in order to use that student for his own personal agenda and political agenda, while her father was wearing the uniform defending this great country overseas. I find that unconscionable that a school board member would escort a politician in order to out our children. We need to protect our children at all costs, even from elected people. So I ask you, whether you vote for me or not, it's not really relevant, I ask you to get rid of the socialist trash that's currently on the school board. Four more years when nothing's been done in the past four years, it's just unacceptable.
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for your involvement. Appreciate it. Thanks for listening. Thank you. [applause] [inaudible]